I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fenslow, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick sewer agency update. The agency has been working through some potential agency phasing map and master plan amendments over the past several months to address some immediate agency member needs. And we will be presenting those recommendations first to the Planning Commission and then to you, the City Council, hopefully by the end of the year is kind of our goal for that. And part of the new concepts we're working on is for individual members to pioneer infrastructure for their jurisdictions and then get reimbursed later at a time when the agency has the capabilities to do so. So there are several policy decisions and recommendations that need to be made before we get to that point to present it to you, but I do want you to be aware that we really are pushing to try to get that by the end of this year, so you should be seeing that. And then just a reminder and a notice that the fall cleanup days are next week, and that's October 7th to the 13th. It's at the Public Works site like it is every year, and that's 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day. And I do want to take this moment to give a huge thank you and shout out to Mike and our Public Works Department and our contractors that we hired to help us clean up that site. If you guys recall, there was a moment where we were kind of touch and go if we could have it because the site was so full of brush due to the July high storms event, but Mike and his team really pulled together to make sure we could have it this year. And it's a great community event that people look forward to, so I'm glad that we're able to provide this service to our residents this fall. So, thank you, Mike. The downtown Papillion Fire Station number three is hosting a community open house on Sunday, October 13th, and that's from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And if you join them, you'll join for breakfast. They're going to do some fire presentations and demonstrations, and then some family-friendly activities, so another great community thing that we provide. And then just a quick couple of reminders, the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council will again this year be hosting the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. That's this Sunday, October 6th, from 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the First Street Plaza, and there's a flyer at your desk on that. And there'll be food, mariachi dancers, some guest speakers, a really fun street dance and other fun things. It is open to the public and free. And then just a couple of other quick reminders, the 55-plus Clubs' Ninth Annual Fall Festival Fundraiser is this Saturday, October 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this is their biggest fundraiser of the year that allows them to do a lot of the really cool things they do for the 55-plus clubs. So if you get a chance to go there and donate and help with that, that would be greatly appreciated. And then just a quick FYI, Mayor Black, Mark, myself, I know, Councilmember Mumgarth, and a couple other city employees are going to be at the League Conference in Lincoln starting tomorrow till Friday, but as always, feel free to reach out, phone or email. We're always accessible, even if we're not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Aye, aye, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F1, Resolution R. 240161, public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the one- and six-year road plan. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 240161?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kluk. Before we get on to the discussion, I do want to point out one thing. Remember when the budget was put together? It was put together based on prior to the special session of the legislature, so it was under the rules as we knew them. And up until that point, the previous one and six in the budget and our savings plans and all of our long-term planning assumed that Hallic Park Loop Road would be done in this upcoming budget period. Then when the special session passed, legislature changed the rules on, they put in the 0% growth rate, they put in the exceptions of how we manage, and we had some discussions on that when we did the budget, the last budget presentation. Then to tie that together with this, remember we had our individual working sessions with council members on City Park? And what we wanted to do with City Park and the various options of City Park, the general feedback we got from each of the council members, most of the council members, not a vote, but just us listening, was do what we could do to speed up the City Park project, but in light of the legislative session and how things worked, the question then becomes, where do we get the funding to do that? And the general consensus we were getting was delay the Hallic Park Loop Road a year or two and use that cash to speed up City Park. So hearing that, we took the administrative authority to amend the one and six year and put it into year three. So just to be transparent, the Planning Commission approved it under the previous guidance and rules, which was now. The budget was presented anticipating doing it, but then after the special session and then talking about City Park, we amended it to put it to year three. So if you see any questions on that, I wanted to make sure that was real clear. Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, I'll reserve comment until it's time for discussion, but I'm going to make a motion to amend the one and six year and move Hallic Park back to the current budget year, as we've been discussing for the last several years.
Sounds good. There's a motion to move it back up. Is there a second on that? A second about Mr. Stube. So we'll get into discussion on that. The question will be, and Mr. Gaines and I had this discussion, the question is, if that's approved, what's the impact? And we're still learning a little bit, so I'll give what I see as the impact, and then if any difference, let Ms. Powers mention it. So remember after the special session, we had originally had some cash saved up for the project. And then we were going to phase in the City Park project. Remember the different phases of City Park, and we were going to phase that in over time. Then with the legislative changes, we were, and the desire of the council to speed up City Park, the question becomes, if we could speed up City Park, where does that money come from? Well, if we use the cash from Hallic Park and put it to City Park, that accelerated City Park. So if the motion passes, then what we're, one of two things would probably happen. We would either revisit the phasing plan on City Park, because we're using that cash now for Hallic, or if we still wanted to do both, we wanted to speed up Hallic and do City Park, we'd probably looked at, do we have the bonding capability to do Hallic, still use the cash for City Park, and then see, do we have the bonding capability for Hallic? So if the motion would pass, I would almost ask, make a contingent upon, we have the bonding capability. Ms. Powers, anything to clarify?
I have nothing to clarify. I think you explained that really well.
Is that clear? Okay. So the motion would be to bring it up onto the one year, and then we just have to understand the impact of that on City Park or bonding. Any council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
I just would like to ask Mr. Cleftner, this issue's been discussed for several years. And since I'm not the expert in public works, I'm going to ask him to, but it's my understanding that this is a project that's needed to be done, that it's a project that we're unable to repair the roads because they're just so bad. And if, as somebody that regularly uses them, a representative of Ward II, I get, I mean, I drive there and they're horrible, and I get complaints from lots of constituents regarding the roads. And I just don't support pushing it back to do a different project that, in my opinion, is not as necessary. But if, Mr. Cleftner, if you could maybe talk a little bit about the condition of the roads, what your opinion is as staff, as to, you know, what needs to be done and when it needs to be done, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Cleftner.
In relation to maintenance of the road, that discussion happened originally when we were looking at it, what we could do to prolong the life of the road. The road's met its useful life in the sense of it going another few years. I don't see a major issue with it. When this was brought up, I didn't really raise any objection. If we have a major, a larger area that falls out, there may be some expenses in the $5,000 to $10,000 range that we would need to spend to get it to last longer. The only thing I would have concerns about, which I, in my professional and personal experience, I don't see it happening, would be if we had like a bad winter with a lot of traffic, which we shouldn't because the road doesn't get a lot of traffic, if it did bomb out. But worst-case scenario, that would happen maybe in the second year during the winter. I don't see it happening this winter. If it happened in the second winter, then that third year, we would be under construction anyways.
Mr. Ingberg.
I have a question as far as bonding authority. How are we, I don't recall exactly how we sit with bonding. I know we have a couple of things falling off, but can someone speak to that, whether it be Nancy or Amber?
Yeah, based on the bond, the general obligation bonds, the next couple of years, we're probably at the, if I remember the bond schedule, I think we're about the peak of our debt service over the next couple of years, and that starts falling off quite a ways. So we were coming up onto a period where we'll have, and I'm talking under the old rules of the legislature. In a couple of years, we will have probably quite a bit of bonding capability. And that's one of the reasons when we talk about the police station and the public service bond and Papio Bay, I've advocated, we actually use bonding for those, because by the time we do them, we're at the point on that bond schedule where it's starting to come down. I think the question on, and this is where I might look to Ms. Powers, the question on bonding capability is, I think we're still trying to fully understand the rules that the legislature delivered out of the special session. I'll even tell you, the state itself, I don't even think fully understands how to implement it, because when the bill was passed out of the special session, they tried to take math formulas and they put them into English, and there's one part of the formula where they talk about product in one and they talk about sum in the other. Well, when the Department of Revenue and the auditor goes to put that together in an actual math formula in the worksheet, they say those terms need mean different things, and then they got to go figure out what was the intent of the legislature. And so they're still trying to figure that out. So based on that, I don't think we have 100% confidence right now what our bonding capability is and what the best strategy is until they give us the budget worksheets that come out of the legislate, out of the auditor's office for the revenue side, and then what do they do in this for special session? So I don't, I don't think we have high confidence in answering, do we have the bonding capability? But Ms. Powers, do you have something to add?
The only thing I would add is, what we know the legislation does is it exempts, and Nancy is right there, so she can correct me, it exempts our bonding levy from that 0% or growth cap. So what that means is that we would have bonding capability as long, so that levy wouldn't drop necessarily. So there might be a need to want to preserve what we're bonding, so there may be a need to want to bond some of these projects. So it's basically incentivizing bonding, but we really don't know yet what that, what that impact is going to be, or if we even would need to do that. And I don't know if I explained that very well, but Nancy may have more to say on that.
Between the two of us, are we clear, Nancy, or anything to add to it?
I might have confused it.
We're having group sessions to discuss some of this, so that's why.
So I would anticipate this type of project would be done through highway allocation bonds, which are not part of the bonds exempt on the new legislation, and we would have to use highway allocation funds for them. So it's, it's where we're using our other highway allocation, where we're currently using highway allocation funds would have to be addressed at that time.
I think I moved you. You, I'm going to jump to Mr. Stube, and then we'll come back. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, thank you. So I agree with Mr. Gaines. We've talked about this project for a number of years, and I support both of them from the standpoint of City Park and Hallic Road. You know, you start looking at the level of effort that we put in, the resources we put into Hallic Park, I think it warrants. Obviously, I don't think maintenance is really an issue because it is a low-volume road, it's a low-speed road, so I don't think that's necessarily the issue. I would throw out a couple of suggestions. One, I would consider this not being highway allocation funding as being a source of revenue. I would support the half-cent sales tax, which was approved by the voters for park improvements. I would consider this as an improvement. I would look at potentially maybe considering putting out a package that allows the contractor flexibility, that can maybe do it over a couple of years. I don't know how you might phase that in from the standpoint of maybe one year being half the project and maybe the next year being another, and see, you've got $2.5 million in there, I don't know from the standpoint of competitive bids, if it would end up being less than that or more than that, but I would support moving this up into the one year.
One comment on the half-cent sales tax, we did have that discussion as well, with the Nebraska Advantage and the Imagine Nebraska Act on the rebate of the sales tax that the state gives. Again, remember on businesses that apply for Nebraska Advantage, we're not aware of those, we're not a party to that agreement. The state signs the agreement with the business, and we're not aware of that. And what they do is the business gets a rebate of the sales tax they paid, and the state's interpretation of that is they also rebate back the half-cent voter-approved. And so based on the notices that we've received so far, we're going almost two and a half years without our half-cent sales tax, and we are still paying the bond on Papillion Landing. And the half-cent sales tax, the way the legislature was written, is that sun sets after the bond, and so they're taking our sales tax away for two and a half years, but they're not extending that time two and a half, so we are losing it. So I don't think we have a high confidence today to issue bonds under the half-cent sales tax. I don't disagree with maybe looking at another option, but I wouldn't advocate the half-cent. Mr. Ingberg.
Yeah, I don't disagree with Councilman Gaines. It does need some work, there's no doubt about it. You know, I guess part of me wants to balance out a little bit of traffic in Hallic Park versus what benefits there is for the entire community if we accelerate City Park. I guess I wonder if we, you know, we could adjust the one- and six-year plan, and perhaps we leave it as you suggest, Mayor, and then reevaluate it next year and maybe do it in next year's budget in the one and six. Delay it a year, but maybe that would kind of even out things, so we could do both.
And not knowing how the vote goes, even if we, even if it stays as is, there's nothing to say, once we understand what the legislature's doing and the rules are there, if there is a way to accelerate, there's nothing to say we can't bring it forward.
Yeah, that's my point. We don't know what's going to end up. Maybe if we do this now, they'll figure it out, the state might actually figure it out within the next year, and then we'll know where we're at a lot better and what we can afford and can't afford.
Mr. Fenslow.
See, I have some questions about the bonding capacity and if we could do projects. So I think I've, those questions have been answered. Ever since I've been on the council, we've talked about Hallic Park Road, and to my understanding, City Park just came up recently, so I'm with Councilman Gaines, and I'm going to support his amendment because it's been a project in the making longer than City Park, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks for answering my questions on the bonds.
You bet. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I'm going to agree with a whole lot of things that were said, but not entirely. I like what Mr. Ingberg said about putting it off maybe for a year and letting things settle down. I like what Mr. Stube said about using the one-and-a-half cent sales tax. I think it's an absolutely appropriate way to spend that money. And then I look at the impact on the city as a whole, and I think that the City Park improvements have a vast greater impact and benefit to the citizens of Papillion than the Hallic Park Road does. You know, I'm not diminishing that the road is bad and needs to be repaired. And I sit here and hear the discussion, and it all comes down to, we don't know what our capability will be in the future to pay for City Park if we use the money now for the road. And I'll sit here and just bluntly say, I don't trust the state of Nebraska for a second after what they did to us in that special session, that I am not going to get out there on the ledge and use, you know, make this decision now with that uncertainty. So I'm going to vote against the amendment, leave this one- and six-year road plan the way it is, but if things straighten out and we're going to be, and we're going to be able to use the one-and-a-half, the sales tax or get the bonding next year, fine, let's move the Hallic Park up into next year, but not this year.
Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. You know, there's a lot of ideas rolling around, and there's always ways that we can improve our city for our citizens, and I think you have to weigh what's the most important and how do we help the most, knowing that we have some level of confidence in the road, that our Public Works Director has a level of confidence for a couple of years, and that, you know, we can move forward and have significant improvement in a park that will affect everyone without doing more bonding. And that's a big thing for me. I would rather see us pay down on our bonds as opposed to just keeping, basically putting the city further and further in debt. So I'm not going to support the amendment because I would rather be a little more fiscally sound right now until we really understand what the state is doing with full understanding that if it becomes a clearer picture to help us move both projects forward sooner, that is great, but City Park definitely takes the priority in my mind.
Mr. Gaines.
So I just want to clarify a couple points. First of all, in nearly 12 years, I've never promoted a project where completing it would just benefit a smaller segment of the population, generally speaking, when it comes to something that's a financial issue. If you, on any day of the week, seven days a week, if you drive down to Hallic Park and you look at the duck pond, you look at the swing sets, the playgrounds, the people walking their dogs, the people jogging, there are more people that use City Park within the city of Papillion in one day than there probably is in a month that you, or strike that, more people that use Hallic Park in one day than there are that use City Park probably an entire month. I drive by both of them on a regular basis. So as far as the impact for the entirety of the city, substantially more people benefit from fishing, jogging, walking their dogs, picnics, you know, whatever activities they're doing down there, it's a giant park that has a giant impact on the entire city, not just a portion of the city. I would argue, if anybody was to drive by those parks and do a study like we do a traffic study, substantially more people use Hallic Park than use City Park. The second thing that I'm actually fairly offended by is the fact that the City Park project is, we've been talking about doing something. It's brand-new. We just started talking about it two months ago, we just started having meetings about it, and because it's maybe a prettier project right down Washington Street, somehow its priority has jumped up and we're forgetting about the actual use. We use City Park just fine right now. We use it for Papillion Days, we use it for, on Wednesdays for the farmer's market, and it's fine right now. But when you nearly have to have a four-wheel-drive pickup to drive down to the duck pond, that's not our standard. And we had this conversation 10 years ago, when you could go in the picnic pavilion and you could sit at a picnic table inside of it and look through the cinder blocks and see the outside of it. That's not the standard of the city of Papillion. That's my opinion, but that's why I brought this up. This has been a long-term project, it's an ISO. To me, it's an embarrassment, it's below our standards, and it needs to be moved up and put a priority above City Park, and hopefully we can find a way to do both of them. And if bonding is advantageous under the new rules of the legislature, I'm not a huge fan of bonding, but we have to adapt to these things. Hallic Park is the priority, it's been the priority, it's been in the plans for years, and that's why I made a motion to amend it.
Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. I'm more in line with the thinking of Councilperson Kluk. I don't like new bonding. We're already, our homeowners here in this community are already seeing their property taxes go up year after year after year because of the valuations are going up, and if we add to that with new bonding on the levy, we're just adding insult to injury, rubbing salt in that wound. We should do everything, I believe, we should do everything we can to respect, you know, the severe financial consequences many families are facing here in our community, and it's a real issue, not for everybody, but for a lot of us. Secondly, I do, I do respect and understand what Councilman Gaines is saying about Hallic Park, but I also heard Mr. Cleftner say that he feels like he can make it work for another couple of years. And Mr. Ingberg made a really good point, we can take a wait-and-see, look at it a year from now, and we might be in a better position. So I'm going to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Fenslow.
Comments in supporting Councilman Gaines is, during the conversations about Hallic Park, we've talked about the condition of the road, how white it is, we've also talked about the safety, and I agree, there's more people using Hallic Park than there is City Park, and that might be because City Park needs a redo, but part of the conversations when we, again, I'll say, those conversations around the road at Hallic Park had to do with safety, so that's a reason why I'm going to support the amendment as well.
Mr. Gaines.
This will be my final comment, but when we talk about bonding, I'm not encouraging bonding Hallic Park, I'm encouraging, it was on the budget, the budget that we passed, it's been in the plans for years, I'm encouraging putting it on the one-year plan and completing it like we budgeted for. And so if it becomes advantageous under the current circumstances to bond something, then we can bond City Park because that's our new project, you know? So I just want to make sure that it's in the minutes that, I'm not encouraging bonding Hallic Park, I'm encouraging completing it as it's been scheduled for the last several years.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote. A yes would move it from the three-year to the one-year.
Three ayes, five nays by Sunday, Mumgarth, Glover, Kluk, and Ingberg.
Motion fails. That does not mean that we won't keep an eye on it, and if there is a way over this next year to do something, especially as we understand what the legislature's doing, we can always bring it forward as well, so just know staff will keep an eye on it. Any council discussion on the original motion? If not, please vote.
Aye, aye, zero nays.
Motion passes. And on that note, I do suspect, and I think I mentioned debating the budget sessions, probably sometime late first quarter, once we understand what the legislature's doing, we know the new rules, and then we start getting more intelligence on what we're doing Papio Bay and the police station, and we get our community survey back, it's probably time to do a council retreat anyway, and that council retreat really does inform a lot of what we're doing, so I think it'll be a good time to continue the discussion. So motion passes, that's all of the committee, that's all of the regular agenda items. Committee reports. Mr. Mumgarth is special ad hoc committee.
The special golf course ad hoc committee met tonight to discuss the results of a survey we did. A survey was sent out to the 180-some people who live on the two golf courses to determine which of two options they preferred. One would be leaving the ordinance as it is now, or two, changing the ordinance to prohibit fences at all on any part of a lot adjacent to the golf course. We got a really good response to that. We got about a 65% response, and it came out roughly 50/50. It was a little bit higher on Terra to go with no fences than it was on Eagle, a little bit lower, to go, higher to go with leave it as it is on Eagle than over on Terra, but it still came out overall about 50/50. So the committee, after extensive discussion about what the ordinance says and how it should be interpreted, the ad hoc committee has recommended that the council do nothing, leave the ordinance as it is, which basically now prohibits fences behind, between the lot line and the rear border, the structure, the rear of the structure. We had some discussion about what that means, how you interpret that, but nonetheless, that's the way it is. And the people who responded to the survey will get notified, and the committee is not moving forward to change the ordinance at this time.
Thank you, and I think that's all of the committees that we've met. Any comments from the floor?
Mayor, I have something real quick. I'm going to add a little bit onto Tom's notes about the committee, so there was a lot of discussion, there was some debate about the building line and what that meant, but what Councilman Mumgarth didn't mention is, we've asked the planning department to make that stricter interpretation official, and they're going to talk about how they do that. It's a letter to the director, it's changing, not changing the code, but there's going to be, for lack of a better term, an interpretation of the planning director that becomes the official. that becomes the official interpretation of the code on that stricter interpretation that's, that has been in the past. So, thank you.
Sure. Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Conway, 1004 West Centennial Road, Papillion. So thank you for providing us with the opportunity to address the issue of fencing on the golf course lots. As the parties are aware, golf course slot fencing has been an issue for more than two years. It came up in 2020. On June 4th of 2024, I addressed the council and provided members with a copy of a document that I read, and I would like to make it clear that I continue to hold the same position outlined in that document. I provided you with a copy of that document, again, for your reference. That being said, since the time, since that time, members of this council decided to create an adjunct committee. They determined which members would serve on that committee. The committee decided to survey the golf course lot owners, which there are a lot more than 180, because like 230 responded to the survey, the golf course owners to resolve this issue. In developing that survey, the committee defined Option 1, and the committee defined Option 2. The overall results of the survey showed that the golf course lot owners wanted Option 2 by more than 2%. Any of you win your election by 2%, you've won your election, folks. Terra Hills golf course owners wanted Option 2 by 9.7%. Eagle Hills golf course lot owners wanted Option 1 by 6%. Therefore, the margin of Option 2 at Terra Hills was greater than the margin for Option 1 at Eagle Hills. Of the four data points that can be gleaned from this survey, Option 2 beat out Option 1 on three of the four data points. It is clear that Option 2 is the choice of the golf course lot owners. We have always been represented as one group, golf course lot owners. Therefore, the survey should be evaluated as one group, which reveals that Option 2 is the choice of the golf course lot owners by more than 2%. Based on this survey, and the survey created by the members of this council, there is no reasonable argument for Option 1. I'm 2%, almost 50/50, folks, is not 50/50. It's 2%. It remains my position that the language in the present ordinance does not allow for side yard fencing. Members of this council have represented in Option 1 on the survey that the present ordinance allows for side yard fencing. In my opinion, as long as the language in the present ordinance remains the same, there will always be an argument for no fencing in side yards. However, if the council changes the language to state that side yard fencing are allowed, they are admitting that the language in the present ordinance does not allow for side yard fencing, and they're admitting that Option 1 was a misrepresentation in that survey. The members of this council will not always be the members of this council. And if the language remains the same, a future council is likely to agree that words and language matter, and the ordinance as it is presently written does not allow for side yard fences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? See none? Any council comments? Mr. Mungard.
Just follow up on that. I would suggest that the Planning Department provide all the council members with the information that the ad hoc committee had, so you'll all better understand what we were talking about. And obviously, if any of you want to introduce an ordinance, you're fine to do that.
We'll have that sent out. Any other council comments?
Couple things from the last couple of weeks. Sarpy Chamber had its economic outlook. A lot of it was about the economy. Ernie Goss spoke. Then we had a national speaker we had the opportunity to bring in, John Bacon, as part of the, HR has a regular speaking series for the leadership, and it was part of that, but it was a large enough speaker. We actually invited some other folks. So we had representatives from Gretna, Bellevue, a lot from Sarpy County that were here, so building the relationships amongst the leadership in the county, and that was a good event. City Wastewater Agency met again. Nothing major at the last meeting. There's a lot of discussion going on right now about the growth management plan and the phasing, and when the different things going on. But it's a pretty technical meeting with the engineers and then the administrators. But hopefully, I'd say in the next 60 days, there should be some new guidance on what the phasing plans are. And what we're really trying to balance is, what's the ideal phasing plan that was developed like six years ago versus when a developer wants to come forward, because there's a real opportunity, and that creates contention, and trying to balance that. And then when does something get pioneered? When do we get reimbursed? So that's being clarified. So hopefully, in the next 60 days, we'll have more information on that. I think it's starting to come together pretty well. And then if you've been hearing at all about the governor's economic development plan, he calls six regions, one Nebraska. Mr. Sturzma's been participating in that, along with a couple of other staff members. A lot of that's around, I think a lot of it's going to be around housing for this area, and so those meetings continue. If you have questions on that, reach out to Mr. Sturzma. We do have a closed session tonight, so I'll say, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss land negotiations? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Clug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Ayes, zero nays.
No restat for the record. The purpose of the closed session is only to discuss land negotiations. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, city clerk, city attorney, community development director.